All right.
Okay, so being Wednesday, June twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three, and being six P M with quorum. I'll call the Bridgewater Planning Board to order item one, item two. We had an executive session at six P M. This meeting will commence an open session. The chair will announce the executive session on its purpose. And we'll vote to go into executive session. The planning board will enter executive session pursuant to Mass General law chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, and Suffolk Construction versus D Camp four-four-nine mass. Four-four-four, two thousand and seven, to discuss strategies respect to pending litigation in the case of John P. Wilden as trustee of the Wilder Properties Realty Trust versus Patrick Driscoll and all. Fifty-four Grinch Park, where an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on litigation litigation position. But the planning board and chair so declares it seeks advice of our legal counsel. So with that being said, do we have a motion to go into executive session? So by Mr. Gemma, do we have a second?
Back in.
By Mr. Gella.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll take the role. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy.
Yes.
Mr. Geller.
Yes.
And is that all we have on right now?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, so you could stop the recording, Shane.
Sure thing.
We're not letting anybody else sound correct.
Hold on, I gotta pause the recording, not stop. All right, back in open session.
Okay, so the executive session has ended at six oh seven. We don't have anything till six thirty, so is there a motion to take a twenty-three minute recess to six thirty?
Oh.
Mr. Geller, do I have a second?
I'll say.
By Mr. Jimmy. I'll take the role. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy.
Yes.
Mr. Geller.
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. All right, so we're in recess until six thirty.
All right, I'm gonna let everyone in the waiting room. Thanks for everyone's patience. You're watching on YouTube. No time has passed.
Just let me grab my, here I am telling you to go and I'm not ready. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I wasn't ready either.
Okay, so. I'll take a motion to reconvene from recess.
Oh, moved.
What is? Do a second.
Okay.
So a motion by Mr. Geller, second by Mr. Jimmy, Ms. Rojas.
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy.
Yes.
Mr. Geller.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So I'll quickly read. Now that we're back in open session and before our first public hearing. I'll read the notice that we have. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law pursuant to the governor's approval of the supplemental budget bill. Temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law have been extended to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Specifically, this further extension allows public bodies to continue to hold the meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present. At a meeting location. And to provide adequate and alternative access to remote meetings. The language of this extension does not make any substantive changes to the open meeting law. Other than extending expiration date with the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings for March twenty, March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. To March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely and shall address the questions through the chair. Of the board. Additionally, I'll note the following. Any or all public members participating in a meeting remotely. Shall meet the following requirements. At the start of the meeting, the chair must announce the name of the members who are participating remotely, which I'll do. All votes will be taken as roll calls and members of the public body must clearly. Must be clearly audible to each other and to members of the public at all times. So with that being said, the following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. I'm Patrick Driscoll, the chair, Mr. Raymond A. Gemmian. Mr. Michael McDonald, vice chair, Mr. Stephen Geller. Miss Esther Rojas. And we have one alternate member with us this evening, Ms. M. J. Spagon. During the meeting, our votes will be roll calls and the following Bridgewater Town staff is participating remotely as well. Mr. Shane O'Brien, the town planner, Mr. Greg Tansy, the town engineer, Mr. Solari, and Mr. Rulian out with us this evening. At this point, everyone's mics are muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting and as items appear at the agenda, the projects. Representatives mics will be unmuted. For a project, there's a public hearing and lots of public comment. We ask you to use chat feature to ask your question by your name, your address, and your question. The host or the chair, the host is Mr. O'Brien, who will recognize all questions in order. You can use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu. And you'll be unmuted when the host or chair recognizes you. Again, please say your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Shane, we should just record that, play that over every, every meeting.
We can try, or we can just have you, you can record it on an old recording machine and we can just play it.
All right, so item three, we have a public hearing. This is a continuation from. One of our last meetings. This is one sixty-eight, one eighty, two thirty-two, two forty, Broad Street, map twenty-one, lots one forty-three, one forty-four, one forty-nine, and one fifty. This is a proposed mixed-use development from Edgewood Development Company, LLC. It's a site plan and special permit approval. We do have a notice from the applicant and they're requesting a continuous continuation to July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any discussion from the board on that request?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we just want to know what else is on the agenda that I'm going to take.
Shane, could you let us know what's on the agenda that evening?
Um, for that meeting, we do have a continuation for the Claremont Hotel, tentatively for that date, as long as they give us material. Seven days before that meeting. We do have a definitive subdivision. That is complete and I will be sending around to the board, currently being reviewed by other departments. I have an incomplete application for another project as well as a request for a rescission of a subdivision, as mentioned at the previous meeting. So potentially it'd be a busier meeting on the nineteenth.
Uh, Chairman, I think we decided that we did not want to have. The Claremont proposal and Broad Street on same meeting. I think this should probably go into the August meeting.
Um, so Shane, I would agree with Ray.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Would it be comfortable? Would we be comfortable, I would say? Or the July, schedule them for the July nineteenth meeting, but if they don't get any material to us by the twelfth, that. We can request that they push over to August.
Well, I, I started to say I agree with Ray. But at the same time, it'd be nice to have one of those on that evening. So I don't know if it's possible. I, I agree that we, you know, there's a lot on our plate. I think that. Hotel is going to be a couple hours. I think that subdivision is going to be at least an hour. We have some other things that may come in, small items, so. I think that. We should only have. With those big, big projects, we should only have one on that night, but the hotel has not. Completed the submittal as of this date, correct?
Uh, correct. We haven't received any updated plans from the hotel. We've had discussions with both. Both applicants in regards to their projects, but I don't, I haven't seen any updated plans for either project.
So does it make sense to either go, just, just have the edge would go to the first meeting in August? Or do we put them on July nineteenth and? Give them, give them the, give them the, the directive that if, if the hotel's on, they're going to be, they're going to be continued until the August meeting.
I don't want to condition it too much. I, I'm comfortable with them being on the nineteenth meeting and we kind of. See how that goes. If the nineteenth comes and it's a big. You know, each project's available for that meeting, you know, we'll have to handle it as is. Unfortunately, you know, we're taking in projects, you know, and we're, you know, we have. Shuffled projects around to make it easier for the board. However, just based on having only one meeting in July, it does make it difficult for. Kind of placing things on agendas and asking for continuances for other projects beyond that project date, so.
Well, if I may, Chairman, I understand what Shane is saying, but it seems to me that. We, we can't foresee the possibility of somebody. Maybe not having their, their plans in on time. What we have on the plate right now is that we have a, a, the, the. Hotel is scheduled for the nineteenth and. Broad Street is not ready tonight, so they want a continuation, so I, I. I would not want to put it on that same meeting. There's simply too much going on that meeting. I would put this on in the first meeting in August.
What is that first meeting in August? Is it just two weeks from the nineteenth, Shane?
Uh, let me check.
Yeah, so it's August second. You know, you know, the only, the only problem with that is what if the hotel comes in and they say, we're not ready, then we're going to have nothing on the nineteenth. They're gonna, and then they're gonna ask for continuance. So I mean, it's, it's going to be a cat and mouse.
I, I hesitate to delay things based on what we have on our plate. I think that we, as one staff, are capable of handling it. So we just got to kind of roll with the punches in terms of this, you know, I understand the board's comfort, but I'm, you know, I'm here to assist with these matters and, you know, I do also hesitate. Seeing both items being on that agenda as well as some other items, but, you know. We shall see.
This board initially decided intentionally not to put these two on the same date. And now we're going back to doing that on the same date. I would not agree to this.
Shane, how about having a meeting the week after, the twenty-seventh? Or what's, what's the, the twenty, is that the twenty-sixth?
I think we discussed it potentially at the last meeting and there was some vacations or. I think there were some issues with that date.
Twenty, July.
Yeah, I think we discussed potentially a special meeting sometime in July, but it just didn't pan out and. Being that the August second meeting is so close and. It makes sense to have three meetings in a row.
I mean, I, I think it'd be a very difficult night. I don't, I don't know how much we'd get accomplished with, with Edgewood if the hotel was on and just to be fair to them, I mean, I. I agree with Ray. I wouldn't want to have him on the same night, but I would, I would be willing to put him on that night, but. Give them the heads up that they're going to get bumped. We're going to continue on if, if the hotel comes in. Right? I mean, what, we, we can do that, right? We can, we can, we, we can ask for a continuation, just like they can, correct?
Um. I guess. You know, they, they are working through their changes and, you know, they, their request was for, you know, the nineteenth of July, they said the next available meeting.
But again, Shane, it's a request. It's not a mandated.
No, I understand.
So.
Same, same with having both items on the thing. It was, we, we kind of requested that. We didn't mandate it. Either or. It's either going to be July nineteenth or August second, so I, I would say at this point. If the board's comfortable with the vote for either or date.
Do we, do, Michael or, or Astrid, do you have an opinion?
Anyway, I'd be fine with the nineteenth, as you said, if the hotel shows up, we bump them back. Because, yeah, there's no way we can, we can do both those on the same night. It's not reasonable. Not reasonable for members of the public either to have to wait up, you know, till, what, ten o'clock just to see the meeting they want. It's not a reasonable burden for the public to.
Well, if the, if the hotel's not ready, Shane, they'll just have to go to the second meeting in August, you know what I mean?
Correct. We, we could, we could put a timeframe on that meeting as well. And state that we have, we're out of time. We're going from six thirty to ten P M and then all of the items will be pushed to the August second meeting. But I'll, like I said, I'll leave it up to the board. They, they asked for the meeting on the nineteenth, but there's nothing that prevents the board from stating the nineteenth or the second.
Is there anything from your office, either Bob or yourself, that really want, wants it on the nineteenth for a specific reason?
No, they requested the nineteenth, so I hesitate, you know. I feel like I'm comfortable with the nineteenth and then we'll see what they progress with by that time.
I mean, at a minimum, at a, at a minimum, we have a subdivision which could be lengthy anyway on that night, so.
Correct, and I'm, and, and we're also held by certain timeframes to hear a subdivision before this board comparative to site plan review.
Okay.
All right, so. Move this along. I'd like to make a motion that this, this, this project be moved to August second.
Do a second to that motion?
I could second that. So that way they both get the time that they deserve.
So a motion by Mr. Jimmy, second by Ms. Rojas. Uh, any board discussion? Okay, Mr. McDonald. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Geller, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, again, this is going to just become a whole cat and mouse game, you know, who, who gets this stuff in and who doesn't get this stuff in? If you get your stuff in, we're going to pump you to the next meeting. I mean. I know, I mean. I, I don't care really either way. I mean, I, I like the idea of saying, okay, the nineteenth, but we're stopping the meeting at this time. If we don't get to you, you get, you're getting continued. Which is another way, which is another way of just being fair to everybody. That's just my opinion.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Ms. Rojas.
Yeah, I, I would say I would oppose to giving that option, just because if, if we start. If they, if we're able to get to them before ten P M but then have to stop it halfway, is that? Is that an option? I, I don't know if we'd have to keep going if.
It would, yeah, I guess it'd be at the hehest of the chair of the board in terms of making those time commitments. They've done it in the past. In the older days, where some towns would have a hard stop at ten, eleven, twelve for certain items.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do kind of agree with Steve, because if we do just push this the second without any recourse to getting it done earlier, if the hotel also. Fails to come in on time, then they're going to want to go to the second and then we, we have a cycle repeat, but.
Well, we just, we just, we just pushed on to the second meeting in August, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, it's, it's up to the applicant to get their completed plans in, right? So. We can't control it, and then they could all ask for continuations anyway, so.
Right.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Jimmy and a second by Ms. Rojas. You can vote for it or against it, and it's to continue this to August second. Um, Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Geller?
I'm up, Shane.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes. All right, so that's continued to August second.
All right, I'll let the applicant know of the continuance. Thank you.
Item four, we have a zoning amendment. Before us, this is a proposed Bridgewater zoning ordinance amendment, Article Three, Section twenty-three A. Planning Board, D. F. Y. twenty-three, zero thirteen, referred by the town council at the five, the May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. And I could bring that up. I don't know if you want to bring that up on the screen.
Sure, I'll share.
If you just want to give some background on it, what, what council, Mr. Chase sponsored it? I don't know if Mr. Chase is with us this evening or.
Uh, no, so it, it was an interesting motion, because typically when we have a zoning ordinance, we usually have a joint meeting with a C E D committee. But this item was. Motioned and introduced and recommended solely for the planning board's discretion, so we are holding the public hearing on this. And this is to amend Article Three, Section twenty-three A of the planning board. In order to redefine an alternate member, currently. Associate members slash alternate members of the planning board, based on our current zoning ordinance, can only vote. For special permit applications. So we would be changing this to allow for associate members. That sit on the board to act for all matters that a full member may not be able to act on in case of an absence, conflict of interest, inability to act. So not just special permit applications, but allowing for all items for that a typical board member would be allowed to do, so. Pretty straightforward, pretty simple as that. It would allow for, in the case of this board, M. J. and Ted. To take the place of a board member. For all matters, not just special permits.
Okay, is there any board discussion on this?
It's pretty cut and dry to me. I, I wonder why the restriction was even there in the first place. Seems like a weird anachronism at this point.
Yeah.
I agree, yeah. Um. I'm just reading this alternate member. It says, the position of the alternate member shall sit in on the board for the purpose of acting on all matters that a full member may act on in case, in the case of an absence. Inability to act or conflict of interest on any part of any member of the planning board. Is this all, I guess it really doesn't define it. It says at the explanation, is this only to meet quorum or is this in, in the case of all absences?
I would say in the case of all absences. Uh, in terms of quorum, I, I don't, I think it's, you need at least a quorum of the regular members. I'd have to. Check again. I think that's something with open meeting law.
Yeah, I, I. I, um.
I think it's for all occasions, because I think this is in response to the April nineteenth meeting that we had to cancel.
Because we didn't have quorum for.
Correct. We didn't have, we didn't have an actual, yeah, we didn't have a quorum of a board, so. So I think, I think in the case of quorum, it would constitute associate board members as well.
Way, way that you read it, I read it, it, it seems obvious to me that it's all positions, all, all time.
Right.
So does anybody out?
Does anybody out? Somebody gets substituted?
Right.
Question is, if we have two alternates, which one? Does the chair decide?
We would, yeah, we would appoint one.
Yeah, I think I, I mentioned to Pat earlier today that you would essentially appoint an alternate on each case and then they would be the alternate. And then the other alternate would be the second alternate, I guess.
Start with me.
Okay. All right, do we have a? Motion on this?
Uh, it is. Uh, we have to, it's a public hearing, Pat, so we do have to open it up to the public.
This is a public hearing. I, I apologize.
Being a zoning, it's a zoning ordinance, so we have to have the public hearing and then we do. It provide a non-binding recommendation to town council.
Okay, so. I. Oh, I do apologize. I just saw planning board hearing, so it's a public hearing.
Hmm.
Okay. Um, so this was advertised?
Yes, this was advertised on June seventh, June fourteenth. And sent out to the abutting communities, D. H. C. D., as well as Old Colony Planning Council.
Right, I have it right here. It was advertised on six, seven, six, seven, twenty-three, and six, fourteen, twenty-three. Okay, so I'll open it up to public comment at this time. Is there any public comment or questions on the? Zoning amendment before us?
Hmm.
Is there anybody in favor that would like to speak in favor of or against the zoning amendment from the public?
Do not see any virtual hands raised nor anybody in the chat.
Okay, seeing none, is there any more board discussion on this public hearing? Saying none, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment?
Oh.
By Mr. Jimmy, do we have a second?
Back in.
By Mr. Geller? I'll take the role. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yeah.
Ms. Rojas?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Yeah. Um. So we have a. An ordinance before us. We closed the public hearing on it. Is there a motion? To give a favorable or a negative recommendation to the town council?
I'll make a motion to give favorable recommendation.
By Mr. Jimmy, is there a second?
I'll say.
And Mr. McDonald? Any discussion? Okay, take the role, Ms. Ross?
Yeah.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Mc, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Shane. I didn't realize that was a public hearing.
It's okay. We usually do them with C. D., so it's, this is a little bit different.
All right. Item five, we have a. Um. Laying out the acceptance of a private way. This is Trinity Circle. This is another. Item that was referred to us by the, the town council. Is that referral in front of us? Is there a specific council that made that, Shane? I don't, I didn't see that in the.
I didn't see a specific referral. This came to me via an email. In which I received the, the letter from the. Members of the trustees that sent it over to the town clerk's office. But it wa, it was referred from the, the council clerk over to our office. I am aware that the town council, based on the process of. Street acceptances, will be holding the public hearing. So this process, as I've laid out to the board, is essentially a, once again, another non-binding recommendation to council. Based on the information that we have on. Recommending that Trinity Circle be accepted as a public way in the town.
Okay, so before I. Have you give an update on it, and I know you prepared a memo as well as staff. Is there any representative from Trinity Circle or? Or that, that would like to present this? So on the call, is there anybody from, is, is, is Mr. Silva's office representing this project?
Uh, I don't, I believe that he was an engineer, but I don't know necessarily that he's representing. The applicant. We did, we did receive information from Mr. Silva, which. Shows a street layout or acceptance. A plan, but not necessarily a, him declaring himself the representative.
Okay. Um, so is there, so then I, did you see anybody from the public? Or representative of this project that wants to speak at this point? If not, I can turn it over to you and you can give us background on it.
Uh, let me just check quickly if there's anyone in the public. Sending anything my way. Oh.
Well, it's.
Well, we do have one of the trustees, Nick Flynn, who is able to talk briefly. I'll unmute him.
Okay, Mr. Flynn?
Uh, good evening, members of the board. I, I apologize, not specifically ready to speak and present, but I can tell you that we've been working. With Mr. Silva's office for the past several months on making sure that we're ready to submit this package. The members of the H. O. A. are fully committed to the process and willing to do whatever is necessary regarding the town's requirements to. Push this process through.
Good, thank you, Mr. Flynn. Uh, Mr. Tanzy or Mr. O'Brien, do you want to give us some background on this? I know you sent some memos and. I read some stuff. I just wanted to see if you could update the board on where we're at.
Sure, I can just give a kind of a brief background of this project. The board approved the subdivision in two thousand and seventeen, October, two thousand and seventeen. It's a subdivision of seven dwelling units, a couple drainage basins, easements. So they're requesting for the town to accept it as a public way. As currently a private way, there were waivers that were requested as part of that decision, many of which are drainage-based. As well as some in the layout of the street. Um, the, the town, we received comments actually from the, the water, the town itself and the board I forwarded as far as the memo received comments from. Water Superintendent Jonas. For some comments in terms of some. Fixes or some edits that need to be made to. The street, those will be provided as well to town council as well as this board, as well as some additional comments from Greg Tansy, our town engineer. Of some deficiencies, so I'll let Greg kind of briefly provide some of those. The town is holding no money on this project for road bond. Those monies have all been returned to the original owner of the subdivision. And I'll keep it very brief. On, on my end of the memorandum, you know, this plan was approved a couple of years ago and there is. An item placed on the approved set of plans that. State that this, this, this street would be remain private. State that this, this, this street would be remain private in perpetuity. Um, I do, I do feel there's a sense of concern in terms of why that would be placed on a plan, I know in twenty seventeen it was debated between the. Town engineer had the time and the engineer on this project in terms of. The uh, deficiencies made on this roadway, um, but ultimately this is a non-binding recommendation to send to council, um, but with that language on the plan, I, I. I hesitate recommending this board from a staff perspective. To, to allow for this project to be accepted from a, as a public's way, so, um, you know. Uh, but I'll let Greg provide his comments and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you, Shane. I uh, made a few site visits out there to Trinity Lane. And um, generally the condition of the road and the infrastructure are in good condition. They, I checked the catch basins, there are sediments in the catch basins. Uh, that need to be cleaned out, there is a uh, storm scepter treatment unit on site just before the. The detention basin that also should be cleaned if the, if the town decides to accept this road. Um, these structures should be cleaned and removed of all sediments prior to um, accepting the street. The uh, the detention basins appear to be in fairly good condition, um. The uh, this, this vegetation growing up in the middle of the, the basins, the berms. Were mowed fairly well, fairly consistent, but. It's that is, the presence of uh, overgrowth, um. Uh, high grasses, not quite shrubbery yet and brush, but if it's not mowed and maintained, that will be, you know, coming up. Uh, shortly, some um. Riprap overflow structures were in good condition, but again. You know, the vegetation control is very important um, in these structures, vegetation tends to flourish because. They get, um, it's an open area that gets a lot of sunlight, gets a lot of water from stormwater, so the two of those. Um, certainly provide an ideal condition for growth spurts of all a variety of species, um. Uh, I, uh. Uh, I checked the ten thousand dollars for uh, to the maintenance fund would be required. Um, I did some preliminary checks on the width of the pavement. It, it pretty much meets what was approved, there was uh. A few areas that were a little bit shy, I talked to the D P W director and he didn't find um, that to be an, an issue. Um, and I, I believe that's pretty much everything that I um, reported on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tanzi, uh, board questions or comments for Mr. Tanzi or Mr. O'Brien? Thoughts?
I have a question, I guess, um, based on what Shane, I'm, I do remember this. Subdivision as being somewhat adversial, difficult, whatever you want to call it. But um, Shane's point about the, the um, plan state, this is not to become a public way. Um. What's causing it to change now, um? I don't, I don't, haven't heard any reason why it should become a public way if we decided that. At some point that not to have it become a public way.
Well, we do allow, just through our street acceptance by law, Ray, um, after three years after the first house is built. Um, within our subdivision rules and regs, that we do allow for um. An applicant to petition, so it, it, it doesn't prevent anyone for petitioning for a public way. Um, but they do have to follow our street acceptance uh, by uh, ordinance uh, through town code.
So, Mr. Jimmy, you all said, I don't want to interrupt you.
Well, um, maybe someone refresh my memory, why did we initially say this is not to become a public way?
Maybe I can answer that, Shane.
Sure.
So. Before I answer, before I go to that. I, I find it. The D P W, the highway division has no comment on this? I mean, they don't have an opinion, I mean, they're the ones that have to maintain, they're the ones that have to maintain it, how do they not have an opinion, number one?
Well, I would say that I did not receive an opinion um, from them, this could be a, uh, an opinion that is made directly to the town council. Um, through, through our street acceptance ordinance, it doesn't require them to provide. The planning board with comments, but I did. Receive comments from Jonas and Greg regarding this matter, and I've included that within my memorandum.
So the, so the other thing that I found is that. You know. One to four lot subdivisions, we want to remain. Private in perpetuity because they're built to a lesser standard. And I understand this was a difficult site, but the waivers that were granted were really pretty standard waivers. And what I don't understand is the, the decision letter, item seven of the decision letter. That I signed in October. Never references this being a private road in perpetuity, it, it actually talks about road acceptance. So if you go to, if you go to item seven. In the decision letter, which I'm going to, I gotta find again.
I can pull it up, item seven.
So, so this was, this is what I don't understand, it's item seven says a maintenance, a maintenance bond shall be deposited with the town by the applicant. Prior to street acceptance, and the amount determined by the highway superintendent is deemed adequate for the maintenance of the drainage structures, detention basins and other infrastructure improvements. For which the town will assume responsible, you just cut me out.
Sorry.
I, I think it says assume responsibility, so. What, what I don't understand is, is what changed between this document that was the decision and our deliberation? And the plan didn't come in for five months later for signature, it usually comes in twenty days later after the appeal. This, this plan didn't come in for five, if you look at the date of this, this is October fifth, I believe. And, and nowhere in this decision letter that we voted on, did we ever talk about this road remaining private? In, in fact, we talk about it becoming public. And we talk about the maintenance bond, which is the ten thousand dollars that we referenced, so. I, I don't know if that was a mistake, I don't know if that. If, if Mr. Silva put that on an error, I don't know if Mr. Silva had a conversation with the D P W department. I mean, I obviously signed the plan, so I, but I can't remember what happened, happened back then, so I'm, I'm just wondering why the plan. And the decision letter contradict each other, because one is talking about maintenance bonds and street acceptance. And then the other one is talking about. An HOA after the fact, and I, we didn't, we obviously didn't have any meetings on that after the facts, we, after this decision letter, right?
Not that I'm aware of, I don't think, there was no, I think there was. Was there a minor modification to the subdivision, um, but I think it was just language-wise? Um, let me make sure.
But I would, but I would agree that, just like every other neighborhood that we accept. You know, we require a five thousand per detention basin maintenance bond, and we'd want them to. Bring it up to standards and clean out the stormwater, just and, and, and so, so there's five or six issues by the D P W and the, the water department. I mean, I think that they would have to be addressed, and then the, the wrote, the drainage bond would have to be placed. Um. But I guess typically anything over four lots, we, we consider accepting. And in the decision letter that I'm looking at from um, ten, five. That you also provide in our packet, it, it, it talks about street acceptance, so I'm, I'm just. I'm confused as to why that ended up on the plan.
It may just be typical language that either Mr. Silva provides on a plan or typical language that we do provide is part of a subdivision.
Well, it's typical language for a one to four lot subdivision, but I, I don't, I don't know. But I'll let, I'll let other people talk, so.
Well, um, based on what you just said. Mr. Driscoll, uh. It seems like. There was some mix-up on our end. Not the uh, developer. Um. So I suppose then the decision letter, letter is the, what we have to go by, not what is written on the plan. And I guess if Mr. Tanzi feels that everything is up to grade, then. I'd go along with it.
I, I would hesitate in terms of stating that either or usurp each other, because the plans are also recorded at the registry of deeds, not necessarily.
Yeah.
Uh. I, I believe the decision may be recorded as well.
Is, is, is there, is there a time limit on this?
Uh, we have forty-five days to act since council referred it to us, so.
When, when did they refer it to us?
Uh, um, I would say, I don't think we will have time before the July meeting. Um, so I would say that this is our opportunity to kind of provide comment, additionally, town council will have to have a public hearing. Um, notify the abutters of Trinity Circle. Um. And we can send our recommendations to them, our recommendations are, once again, non-binding. So we just kind of provide our insight in terms of the situation and council can act whatever means necessary.
So. So Greg, I mean, from, from, from a D P W perspective, I mean, you, you, you were asked just to look at it for, for conformance, is that it?
Right, and it, it conformed, it's just, there's some. Maintenance tasks that need to be performed by the HOA before. We take it over, when, when we take over the road, we want the road. To be free of any uh, defects. Um, the, the highway department looked at the roads, they were, they were fine with it, they didn't have any. Problems from uh, condition of pavement, berms, uh, layout, that sort of thing. I looked at it from the standpoint of uh, infrastructure. And um, and stormwater management, and there's some routine maintenance items that need to be done. The water department went out there. They have a standard uh, protocol of inspection that they do, it's, it mostly deals with the valves, whether the valves. Um, they can get a um, a wrench on the, the bonnet nut of the valve and that they can operate them, and apparently, um. During construction, and this is a common situation, is sediment gets in the um. Uh, what they, they call the um. The, the uh. Curb stop box, which is the, the um. Structure that allows um, maintenance to be done on the valves, um. You know, that, that curb cut, that curb box comes right up to the top of the pavement, there's a cast iron cover on it. They flip off the cover and they drop the wrench down on the valve and they open it and they, they turn it, but if there's all sediment covered on top of that. Um. On that valve nut. That sediment has to be evacuated and removed, and that's kind of a routine uh, maintenance issue, I think, um. A company like Holdley's or Wind Water can uh, take care of that, I think they do it with um, air pressure and stuff, and they just uh, remove the sediments, but. These basic maintenance items should be performed prior to the town. Accepting this road, and they will have to post the um, the maintenance fee, which is now ten thousand dollars. For the D P W to go out and uh, maintain. Uh, the, the infrastructure going forward into the future.
So, Mr. O'Brien, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. So I was writing some down.
So we, I mean, we have. I don't want to create a situation where we create a precedent that we accept. Roads that are intended to be private, because we don't ever want to accept these one to four lot subdivisions that are not built to standards, but. This was built to the standard. With the typical, you know, nothing out of the ordinary in terms of waivers. And, and it, and it does, the decision letter states that. You know, it. Prior to street acceptance. Um. It talks about the, the drainage structures and, and, and the, in the drainage fee, so. Did we ever, and I, I think I asked you this before, did we ever find the minutes of that last meeting?
Of this meeting in twenty seventeen, it, from. The board talked about the waiver requests, a lot of the minutes referred to, it's essentially Mr. Silver answering Azu's comments, Azu providing comments. The board drafted the decision, um. And closed the public hearing, um, they closed the public hearing and a meeting before approving the decision. Um, but the decision was drafted prior to that, so, um. The board had a couple tweaks, but the, the decision itself was discussed at that uh, twenty seventeen meeting.
Yeah, so if the, I mean, if the intent was to keep it private, we would have discussed it at that meeting in this decision letter, right?
Yeah, the only thing I can find within those minutes in terms of discussion was uh, Azu and Larry kind of going back and forth in terms of. You know, D P W wanting to see it provided, see it as private. Whereas Mr. Silva arguing in terms of an applicant may petition. Um. You know, for a street to be accepted at whenever, according to the rules and regulations.
Board comments or questions? Does anybody have a suggestion for a path forward? Anyone?
Seems like we're missing critical information here, I really don't know how to proceed.
In, in regards to the recommendation to council, it can be favorable or not favorable. Um, but I, I think is whatever recommendation this board provides, that we provide that additional information that Mr. Tanzi is stating. That the town would require a maintenance bond um, for this matter, as well as taken to consideration and provide um. Mr. Tanzi's comments and Jonas's comments, uh, the water superintendent as part of um, this recommendation. Uh, or no, not recommendation to the council, so. I, I just want to make sure that we have the proper attachments and we provide proper information, I can, I can draft a, draft a recommendation, um. For the chair, um, that you can look over, Pat.
Well, I think, I, I mean, I think if, if. If somebody were to make a motion and it was to be a negative motion, we wouldn't need those conditions, but I think that if it was a favorable. Recommendation, that's something we ask for everybody, we ask for the, the maintenance bond, and we ask for the items to be addressed that the. Town has, has pointed out, like the mowing, the cleaning, et cetera, so we don't have to do that right away. Um.
Yeah, I would say that either or, you're gonna, you're gonna, if, if the potential of a split motion, it could go, you, you know, favorably or unfavorably, it could be two, three, or three, two. The motion is still.
But, but I think that the tough part is we have two conflicting documents, I don't, you know, we have a document that says, you know.
Um, sure, how about if we refer this to town council, but ask them. To refer to the, the actual, our, our town attorney as to which, which document is the takes precedent here?
Like, like I previously stated, there, there's, there'll be not enough time before the next meeting. Um, I hesitate to talk to the town attorney, because one town council will probably reach out to the town attorney, um, as being that they're going to be holding the public hearing. We're essentially a non-binding recommendation to either. Recommend or not recommend to town council that we want to see this road accepted from a planning board perspective. So I did lay out the process in terms of a memorandum, um. You know, I laid out my case in terms of how I feel in terms of what it states on the plan itself. Um, and I understand the chair's comments in terms of, uh. uh, how this project looks as well as understanding why the owners and the trustees in the homeowners association wish to see this road publicly accepted.
All right, so we gotta figure something out here.
I can't really in good conscience vote to recommend, uh, without knowing why that, that stipulation's on the plans. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not in favor of recommending it.
But I, but I believe you can't explain why, even though I've noticed on the plan, according to statutes and laws, they can come and ask it to be accepted no matter what.
Yeah, our, our rules and regulations allow for anyone to petition and i- i- I, I would say in this, this case that you know, there was a different owner at the time of these, the decision and the plans. And it looks like they're looking out of not having to pay a stormwater fee and leaving it out to the homeowners association to do so if this proceeds to move forward. Um, but yeah, the, you know, it's under a, a, essentially in a different ownership, but you know, i- i- it is conflicting.
Well, well, Shane, I think, I think our job, right? Our job is to
Just steering, is steering, is steering town council in a certain way and asking questions that town council wouldn't necessarily know because they weren't part of that subdivision process.
So, so typically lots, typically subdivisions over four units, we allow for street acceptance. The site was a difficult site in terms of drainage and perks and everything else. And I remember all those discussions and Larry had to take the water from the front of the street and bring it, uh, from Ashed, bring it out back. And, and I think the, I think the, um, retaining walls, Greg, are outside of the layout, correct?
Retain.
Isn't there retaining wall or a culvert right, right there? Is there retaining wall at that culvert going across?
Yes, there is a, there's a culvert that does go across.
Is that, are those walls outside of the layout?
I don't, I don't believe they are, um.
Is it, is it, is it, is it, is it like to go to the plan? Is it just a culvert or is it a wall? Let me see.
As you enter in, there are retaining walls where they cross the wetland. And, and then, um, obviously there'd be a culvert underneath it. But if the retaining walls were not within the right of way, then they would be on private property or somebody's.
Right, but I think our rules say typically we say that the wall should be outside of the layout.
Um, it looks like they're in the layout. Cause when you, when you drive in, there's two single family houses on
On either side.
Ashed Road, so I would assume that'd be in the layout.
If it's a privately owned, um, landscape retaining wall of, of, uh, individual house that had to you know, terrace their front lawn just because of grading. A, a retaining wall like that would have to be outside the right of way because that is a privately owned um, landscape structure. Uh, this structure is, um, infrastructure, um, it's a, it's a retaining wall that is required in order for the road to be constructed. Um, and, and to cross that wetland area with minimum impacts to it, so. That would be part of the roadway and drainage infrastructure, which would be owned by either the homeowners association or the, uh, or the town, if the town chooses to accept the road.
Shane, at the last meeting, Mr. Really presented an option about the drainage, uh, uh, versus the road itself, um. But if we ask for a drainage fee, we would maintain the drainage, correct?
That's correct. That's what Mr. Tansy placed in his memo. Um, talking about that, that maintenance stormwater bond would be that ten thousand dollar number that the, uh, town would need um, as part of this or DPW would need. But this would be at the behest of the homeowners association, not the original developer.
So it's funny because the, the, the plans also have, the plans have conflicting information because the, the decision letter is also on the plan, correct?
Uh, yes. The irony of it.
All right, so we have Mr. O'Brien's recommendation. We have info from different departments, um. Where are we on the, the board? Discussion on this, or is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this some more?
Mr. Chair as well, um, the, the public hearing for this will also be in front of council. So when council does schedule um, this street acceptance, uh, members of the public will be allowed to interject in terms of it and, and they will have the board's uh, recommendations for that meeting.
Seems to me that, um, you know, the, the, the process here is that we, we either recommend approval or disapproval. But in my mind, I'm in between. Um, I still want some clarification in my mind regarding what the plans say and what we, what we approve in terms of, uh, um, various issues, um. Maybe we should, uh, I'm not sure whether it's proper, but we recommend to deny, but with the intent that the, the clarify, they clarify what is on the, the plans and what the approval, uh, notice says. And then make a decision based on that.
Um. I just hesitate Ray on that because then this recommendation goes to council and then they take it up in whatever means they determine is the way they want to proceed. So that could, that could be part of their recommendation, but then they could also approve or deny it.
You know, I, I also don't, you know, I in some ways, I think we're treating this unfairly and inconsistent with what we've done in the past. I mean, typically any neighborhood over four lots has been able to come to us for street acceptance. I think I would be in favor of giving a favorable recommendation and pointing out, it just in our letter to the, the town council, just saying, you know, at this point, we'd like to make a favorable recommendation. You know, I, you know, there's, there's two conflicting, um, items on the, on the plans. The, the, the DPW has items that need to be done. The, um, water department has items that need to be done. And let them hold the hearing on it. I mean, I just, I, I from, from the planning board perspective, if they put the, the bond up for the drainage and they fix the issues, they've done everything we've asked them to do. Um, that's just kind of where I stand at this point, so.
I just can't be in favor without, without knowing why that notes on the plan in the first place. We can speculate about what happened six years ago. And it's unfortunate we don't have more time to figure it out. I think if we had another meeting, we probably would be able to put this to bed, but unfortunately we don't. So with the absence of that information, um, you know, I'll, I'll be a no vote, but hopefully town council will have enough time to figure it out and get to the bottom of it.
Shane, so so we don't end up in a situation where they have to resubmit. Could we, could we, could we send a note to the council asking them to continue it, uh, uh, to allow us to do more due diligence because how, how does that process work?
Um, I'll bring up the process. Essentially, the let me pull it up. So I can, I can kind of, so I'll read out our article, um, four.
It's in a packet.
It's in a packet. So town council can consider a petition for road acceptance based on public to benefit condition of the way town resources or any other factor it seems significant. Upon the consideration shall determine whether to proceed with evaluation of the proposed layout set forth below. So as part of that, the count, the council shall hear the, all town departments and petitioners who desire to be heard and may hear all others at a discretion. And then the town through the town manager may assess betterments for such a portion of laying out and improving ways to provide for their acceptance by the town as it shall determine appropriate. So a, a petition is filed with the council clerk and that the petitioner shall submit an as-built or acceptance plan and completed in, in accordance with the planning board's rules and regulations. So the petition shall be reviewed by the Department of Public Works Director or his designee, um, the Water Supply and Water Pollution Control Superintendent, Fire Chief, Police Chief and Conservation Agent. We don't have one of those, uh, for conformance to state and local law and ordinance as well as conformance to talent construction standards. So other departments may provide recommendations. That doesn't necessarily mean to the planning board. Um, but those, they may all submit their approval or disapproval to the council clerk within sixty days of the initial petition filed with a council clerk. So no later than a hundred and eighty days from the filing of the petition, the town council shall vote whether it ten, intends to lay out the way and then the vote becomes a public record. If affirmatively voted, the town council shall refer the petition and departmental recommendations to the planning board for non-binding recommendation. The planning board has forty five days to report. If no report is made within said forty five days, as it received the petition, the proceedings continue with town council. And from that point, the town council schedules a public hearing where a notice of a public hearing shall be given by the town council fifteen days before hearing is scheduled, notice of time and place and copy of petition filed with town clerk. And at least seven days before the hearing, notice shall be given, um, by posting the position, whether it be in two, uh, public places of the town, one on the town's website, um, in the newspaper and that publication and certified mailing return receipts sent to the owners of the land to be taken, um, are required. So those notices are sent to the butters and where, uh, time, place and hearing um, can, in the plan itself can be reviewed. And then the town council, um, or another committee designated by the council holds a public hearing and where the conclusion uh, or after recommendation submitted to town council, um, by majority vote, they shall make a finding that the laying out is required by common convenience and necessity. And if there's no objection, um, to the petition at the time of the public hearing, the council can adopt an order by majority vote to lay out the way. And then that council order must be adopted within twelve months after the petition.
Uh, Shane, if, if I heard you correctly, um, I believe you said that what you read was that the planning board has to report the town council.
Yes, within, within forty five days.
And what the term report though, it does not say affirmative or negative.
Yeah, but if we do, but if we don't report town council was.
It's a, it's a, it's a non-binding recommendation, Ray. So it would be, you're reporting, it, it's essentially the board can vote whatever means to recommend or not recommend, but they can also provide, we can also ask questions and comments as part of this. Um, saying that we have concerns of X, Y, Z, and this is how.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I did not hear the word recommend when you read that.
Non-binding recommendation. Well, to the planning board for a non-binding recommendation. So report, we, we would be reporting a non-binding recommendation.
Right. But I have to listen to some of the conversations. I, I would probably be in favor of it as long as the applicant would, uh, adhere to everything that the plans either has suggested that needs to be done and everything, and, and whatever other department needs to be done. So the road's in tip-top shape for acceptance. I, I think you're getting hung up on a, on a note on a drawing that almost means nothing because our bylaws say that even though it was a note on there, they could still petition to become a public one.
Uh, not, I don't necessarily agree with that, Steve. I mean, why, why put something on a plan if it's, it doesn't mean anything? You know, it, it seems to me we I mean, I, I essentially I'm agreeing with, uh, Pat in, in that and, and that we ask for more clarification. He's saying make recommendation for, I say make recommendation against. But again, we're asking for a clarification. I, I can't, I can't see us uh, recommending that we either approve or disapprove without some sort of added comments regarding the issues that we're talking about right now.
But, but it's, it's a non-binding recommendation, so it's not, you know, essentially council is going to do what they want to do. They're just looking for us to because we, we're the ones that listed this in the first place. They're just looking at the guidance.
I s- I suspect the town council will listen to our recommendation.
I'm not saying they won't.
Mr. Gal, are you still talking?
No.
Uh, do you just blow it up some? All right, so what, how do we want to proceed? I just don't, I just don't want to screw up the opportunity for a neighborhood to be accepted. They have that right. They've done what we've asked from a planning board perspective. And we have two conflicting notes, right?
I would, I'd be happy to include all comments made here. Um, that if this were to proceed, that all of DPW's um, water department's items, uh, are placed as part of this as well as a maintenance bond of the ten thousand dollars be provided to the town, um, as well as there are concerns that there's conflicting language on the plan as well as part of the decision where the decision mentions potential street acceptance where the plan itself states that the the, um, property or the, the subdivision will be, uh, maintained in perpetuity as a private way. Um, so I'm happy to provide all those comments as part of any report because we'd want it to kind of mention all of the above.
Right, but I think, I think that any street that we've accepted in the past or any street that we've re- recommended acceptance for, we've asked for the DPW's issues to be addressed, the water issues to be addressed and, and the maintenance bond to be placed every, every neighborhood we've done that.
And additionally too, it does look like that there is a betterment um, assessment that can be made, um, from the town manager's office in terms of making sure that if accepted that there are monies available to make sure that this road be up to town standards by the time it gets there and not at the behest of the town, but at the behest of the petitioner.
Oh, uh, so would we now? That being said, Shane, would we make a motion saying that, you know, which recommend to be accepted with you know, all conditions met stated in, stated in the letter?
Sure, yeah.
Be drafted by you and I guess, right, you know, you can prove it by that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll run it by Pat. I'll, um, review by the chair as well as, you know, just based on the comments provided.
I mean, the, 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 the notes conflict each other, but the note on the plan must have had some relevance because the developer wouldn't just go out and start an HOA and everything else. I just don't know what happened between the time that we signed the decision letter and that plan came in five months later for for signature because something obviously changed. And it wasn't, it doesn't appear that that happened in a public meeting because it's not referenced in the, in the, in the document. So based on that, again, I don't want to create a precedent for these small neighborhoods because we don't want to accept one to four lot neighborhoods that not built to town standards. I, I don't want to derail it for the neighborhood and give them the right to go before the council with a strike against them already with a negative recommendation. I think we could say that based on the information we have, if we decide to recommend it, you know, we want the conditions of the drainage space and the water department, the highway department to be vet, uh, or the, um, or the, um, the, the engineering department, just like we would do with any other project. But Pat, Pat, Pat and Steve, I mean, those conditions that you're talking about would be what we would normally require of any street acceptance. Not this, that wouldn't be unusual. The unusual thing is what is on.
Street acceptance. Not this, that wouldn't be unusual. The unusual thing is what is on the plan.
Right.
So I would, I would say if we're going to vote to recommend that the issue. Of the non-acceptance on the plan is what they have to. Decide on. Not necessarily when Mr. Tanzi is pointing out, I mean, that's normal. We would always say that they have to correct the street and drainage and so forth. If there's any issue.
Could we, could we even? Go further to suggest that. One of the conditions that we would make in order to make a favorable. Recommendation is for this to be further investigated so that that information is provided to the council.
It would, it would be up to, I guess. Town council to do additional research on that matter. It, 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 it'd be tough to go beyond. The minutes of the board to see what occurred. You know, if, if like what Pat's saying, it appeared on a plan and then. Suddenly appeared on the final set of plans that were signed. You know, there, there's not going to be anything on the record that states how that occurred. And you know, back, then back in the later days of, I guess, twenty seventeen. You know, our minutes didn't really kind of. State that it's mandated that's private. Now, it just kind of. Is one of those things that were, I guess, mentioned through the process, but not, you know, bound to it. But there could be a recommendation that the applicant, you know, if comes before this board again for a modification. To remove said language on the plan. Or something in regards to the decision itself.
Well, that's what, that's what I was just thinking of. If we're, if the neighbor, the neighbors closed out though, right? Essentially.
Yeah, every house is built and it's been five years since it approval.
I was saying if they could come before us and remove that language, that'd make things a lot easier, but as a modification, but they can't do that, right?
You, I guess you could modify the language of it because then, you know. If five or ten years from now, they petition for it to be accepted and it is, that language will still remain on the plan. Even if it's a different board in front of us.
Alright, does somebody want to make, does somebody want to make, go ahead, Mr. Geller?
We recommend it just pointing out that, that issues on the plan, the town council figure out why.
You could equally say, why wouldn't we not recommend it and then point out why we didn't recommend it to town council and they could figure it out. We work the same either way, really.
There's somebody have a motion, so you want to make a motion and have further discuss? If there's no further discussion, can somebody make a motion?
Move to not, whoops, sorry, go ahead. I make a motion not to recommend, uh, recommend adoption of the street to council.
Discussion?
Well, yeah, I'll, I'm. Moving back and forth in my mind about this. And. The idea of making a motion to recommend or not recommend. Both of them are based on some stipulation that we want the council to look into. I'm leaning more towards. Pat's point of view that we. We. Recommend with the stipulation that the council look into the. What is, what is on the plan? So therefore I would not vote for this.
We have, we have a motion in a second.
That's, that's, we're still in discussion, so. You know, I, I, I get it and I, I, I understand there's a note on the plan, but there's also a different note in the decision letter and I think that. Equally is important. I also think we've given every other neighborhood over four lots the opportunity. To be accepted. We've also given all those other neighborhoods the same. Mind away this, so. I would vote against this in hopes that we could. Create a favorable recommendation, just point out the two conflicting. Conditions and addressed and have them address the. The issues brought forward by water, DPW and engineering.
Yeah, my only issue with the, pointing out that, you know, every other subdivision over four lots has the opportunity to be accepted. They don't have that note on the plan. So I think that makes this substantially different. I don't think it's unequal or, or a different treatment.
And I wish I, 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 I agree, Mr. McDonald, but I. It's, and it's unfortunate that we only have. This meeting to talk about it, right? Because. Maybe we could find some language or some minutes that made everybody feel more comfortable or more uncomfortable, but. I just think that. At this point. I don't want that to strike against them going before the town council. I'd rather. Point out the issue and say, you know. We recommend it, but, but we want you guys to consider these two, two, two conflicting issues. And then go from and let them figure it out instead of, instead of giving a negative recommendation right off the bat.
Is that, is that line seven in the decision letter? Is that just a standard, that's just standard language on pretty much all decision letters?
Yeah, I, I would have to look at more, that's, I see it typically in terms of recent subdivisions I've looked at, but I can't speak on behalf of every. Subdivision decision I've read, Michael.
Right, yeah, of course. I mean, the, the two possibilities are that note on the plan is a mistake. And there's no harm or that note on the plan is very intentional. We don't know why it was intended. And we, we could just be skipping over something that could do substantial harm. That we don't know about, essentially.
Right, but if that came from. A town engineer at the time who was Mr. Tenero, he's still our DPW director. He can. He can address that with the council.
Yeah, absolutely. I just, I can't vote in favor of something. I don't know the consequences of. I'm, I'm happy to withdraw my motion. Somebody can make a motion to.
No, no, we, 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 so we have a second, we have a second, a motion and a second. Any other discussion on it? We can vote on it or you can withdraw, Mr. McDonald, whatever you want to do.
Uh, yeah, I'll just withdraw. I mean, somebody can make a motion to approve and I'll just, you know, just be a no vote on that. Hopefully just, you know, the, the non-unanimous vote will give council the head up. They, you know, they need to do this further.
Okay, so we, Mr. McDonald, you wish to withdraw your motion? Who made the second? Miss, Miss Rojas, do you wish to withdraw your second?
Do I need to and then?
Well, we don't have a motion anymore, so.
I can withdraw my second.
Mr. Jemian, do you want, Mr. Geller, do you want to try to craft a motion?
I'll make a motion to. To recommend this. Recommend this three come a public way. As long as council can. Figure out why there is. Two different notes from the drawings in the decision letter. Does that make sense?
Well, they'll probably ask us to figure that out, but I, you know.
Well, it's okay.
That's fine.
Send it back to us.
Alright, and I, I also think that. If. So, so is that your motion, Mr. Geller?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Along with all the regular recommendations from. All of the departments, but that's like Ray says.
Is, as well as the concerns addressed.
Did you repeat that, Steve?
As well as all the other department concern.
No, no, the, the original motion, which was she said.
To accept it to a public way. As, as long as we point out to council that there are. There is a difference between a note on the plan and the decision letter. Of private way to non-private.
Well, friendly change, just, I would say.
So, Mr. Jem, do you, do you want to make a second with an amendment? Are you second to his motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Go ahead. So we have a motion by Mr. Geller, second by Mr. Jimmy. Mr. Jimmy, do you want to make a motion to?
I would just say that. We voted to recommend approval of. Street acceptance with the stipulation that the council. Look into the discrepancy between what is stated on the plan and what we have in terms of our approval letter.
Will do. Is this recommendation also include DPW's comments in the maintenance bond?
Includes all the, yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, I think we wouldn't recommend acceptance unless those things are met, correct? The, the maintenance bond, everything that we ask everybody else for, correct?
Yes, correct.
So. Could I? Ask that we consider a different approach, slightly different approach, Mr. Jimmy, because I agree with you. I don't know if we want the council to necessarily look into it, just point out that. Based on the information we have, we're going to, we're going to recommend acceptance. We'll point, point out there are two conflicting notes recorded. And, and, and based on that, we want to give the opportunity to go forward and, and if we recommend acceptance with all the. Normal things that we asked for, ten thousand dollar maintenance bond, DPW comments, water comments, all be addressed.
If, if I include the language further investigation, further investigation may be necessary on council's behalf.
Or planning board's behalf, yeah, whatever, whatever.
I can add that and I'll let you look that over, Mr. Chair. Are you comfortable with that, Ray?
I don't know where I am right now.
It's the longest day of the year.
So, so we have, we have a motion, we have a motion.
I, my motion has to have something in there that would, that would. Basically say to the council. That we want some sort of clarification. If we, if we don't do that, I mean, we, we, I think we just talked about the fact that if we had more time, we would look into it. But since we don't. I think we, it's incumbent on us to ask the council to.
Well, we're the ones that did it. They're probably going to ask us, you know what I mean, like.
Well, now, if we don't have an answer, then maybe town council has to make a determination which one. Which one is the takes precedent. My answer, whatever we, we. All, all I'm saying is that I'll, I'll, I'll agree to recommend approval as long as we said, we're saying that the, the town council should look into the discrepancy, but in terms of the approval. If that means sending it back to us, so be it.
Okay, I can provide that and I'll have the chair review that language as well, Ray, prior to sending up to the council clerk.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. Geller to recommend. With the. Caveat that, that the DPW, the town engineer comments. The water department comments and the ten thousand bond be placed, placed. In addition, we want to have a note on there that. That. You know, as part of our recommendation, we're pointing out. That there are two different, two different recorded conflicting comments, but we're going to recommend acceptance. And, and point that out to them and have them look into it if they so desire.
Yeah, clarification on that.
I think probably somebody from the planning board should be at that.
Mr. Mr. O'Brien, do you want?
I'm writing the letter and send it over to them and then.
Alright.
I'll, well, we can, I'll let the board be in tuned in terms of. When that'll be scheduled, I'll, I'll maintain contact with Deb and then we can kind of go from there and figure out. When that is and.
You know, honestly, we should encourage the DPW director to. Make a comment because at the time he was a. He was a town engineer and now he's the DPW director. So he knows in terms of capacity and that he probably knows that site better than anybody. So I, I think it would be.
You, you, you send a zoo and Larry, both of that public hearing and council is going to have a show.
So. Alright, so we have a motion to. Recom- recommend by Mr. Geller, second by Mr. Jemian. We talked about a bunch of conditions. Is there anything else anybody would like to add as part of this discussion? I'll start with the role. Mr. McDonald?
No.
Miss Rojas?
Yeah.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
And I'm a S, okay. Alright, thank you very much.
Mr. Flynn? And now that you sat through this, would you like to sit on the planning board?
We have no available spaces.
Or maybe, you never know. And this is a simple issue.
I do wish the residents best luck in this result. Hopefully it's cleared up.
Yeah, and Michael, I'll provide your comments as part of it too, of the concerns that you have.
No, Michael, they were, they were good comments and I don't like to. You know, I guess it's good we disagree at times, right?
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's actually a good thing, yeah.
I just wanted them to be able to have the opportunity to keep it moving forward because I, I, I don't know why that ended up on there, but. Alright, so thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright, so we have, let's see what else we have next, Mr. Mr. O'Brien, didn't you say it? Six thirty would be a half an hour?
I lied, well. I didn't lie, but. It, I, I grossly underestimated. This is why I don't involve myself with those online sports bettings because I'd be wrong. I would take, I would take the under but be completely over.
Alright, so yes, this is why we should not have.
It's the longest, at least the sun's out still, guys.
But, but could you imagine if we kept all those hearings on the same night?
Yeah, if Ross G was still on, yeah, it'd be.
Alright, so we have planning board minutes for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, under item six. Has everybody? Looked at those minutes? Does anyone want to make a recommendation to approve those minutes?
So moved.
But Mr. Geller, do we have a second?
Second, second.
By Miss Rojas? A discussion? I'll take the call, the role, Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Am I forgetting somebody?
You.
Oh, I'm a S. That didn't seem like. Oh, Miss, Miss Rojas, I couldn't find her. I apologize, yes. I apologize. Board items for next meeting, we kind of went over that with the.
Yeah, I kind of reiterated the subdivision that we have. I'll have to talk to you, Mr. Chair, in terms of some other items being placed. We do have, as mentioned at the previous meeting, we do have Cranmore Estates requesting a rescission of a subdivision. That may be on for the July nineteenth meeting. As well as we do have one outstanding site plan review for a project for thirty-one Perkins Street to come back before the board. As a new construction, but I've not received a payment of the fee yet, so. I will keep the board in the loop on placement of those items, but I hope not to overwhelm you with the one meeting that we have in July.
Okay. Any committee reports, planner reports? Is that your planner report, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, don't come to the July fifth meeting. We're not having one as we've discussed. I think, I don't know, Mr. Chair, I haven't been here long enough, but. You said typically in June or July or. August, there was some sort of reorganization of the board. If the board wants to do a reorganization at some point this year. I would leave it up to the board, but I don't think there's. Any, he'll push. Unless. You guys are looking for it, but. That is all.
I'll just say this, you know, if there's anybody that's unhappy with their role or wants to change their role or wants to do anything, they can reach out to you and we can.
We can do a reorganization.
We can put it on the agenda to discuss it.
But I haven't, I haven't heard any. Rumblings or anything, so I've just kind of rolled with the punches. I think people like you as chair.
But if they don't, they can vote me out.
You have a mutiny, that's fine. But like I said, we're not going to see each other until July nineteenth.
No, but seriously, if anybody, you know, this. I don't think we did it. I don't think we had this discussion last July because we're in, if anybody wants to change their role or. Or. You know, we used to have a clerk. We don't have a clerk right now. I don't know what the clerk even does anymore. I don't know if that's an outdated position.
It is, actually. It's like third string.
We have a vice chair, chair. So if anybody wants to change their role, role, become clerk, become something else or. Whatever. I'm happy to stay and would like to stay as chair, but if somebody else has a different opinion, then reach out to Shane and we can discuss it.
We could even look, we could even look to having some sort of discussion of reorganization in January of twenty twenty-four to start off the year and. Have just. A, a revote of everything, so up, up to you guys. I just wanted.
I, I, I think it's good, I think it's a good point that you just brought up. So if anybody is unhappy with their role or wants to change their role. Or wants to make a change, reach out to you and we can put it on the agenda, that's all.
I don't think you're going to see a mutiny against you, Pat. I don't think, I don't think it's bubbling up at all. Maybe, but I. I don't think, I don't think it's bubbling up at all. Maybe, but I don't think so.
Yeah, that would be, uh, I'm not gonna say that anytime soon.
My, my wife would probably like it. You know?
But anyways, yeah, um, um, Bob couldn't make it here tonight. Um, he's doing a uh Bridgewater Business Association meeting tonight. As well as I believe there is a time and date, um, sometime in September, that will be the first uh public hearing for the downtown revitalization stuff. Um, we've been working with uh Horsey, Witten. And other groups in terms of a lot of. Downtown projects, uh, as well as there is a new um homepage or a new downtown revitalization. Um, website. Uh, Bridgewater MA Vision to Reality. You can check out um what Bob and Nicole um from our office have been working on. Um, but, you know, it's kind of a preview of. Things to come, uh, as well as. Other presentations, um, that will be coming before the board. Bob's kind of hit the ground.
What's the website, Mr.?
Bridgewater MA Vision to Reality. Let me just make sure that's correct.
Right, that's, that's it.
Okay, so that's the webpage. Um, you can access it, I believe, from our planning and. Uh, community and economic development page, um, as well as um. You know, feel free to reach out to either Bob, myself or Nicole, and we can happy to send it around, but you'll see some QR codes popping around um town hall. Uh, they got some posters and some easels. You can check them out. Um, but that's kind of what we're rolling with.
We're not getting a presentation, are we?
You're gonna get a presentation.
When?
Uh, I don't know offhand. Um. Do you want on the July nineteenth meeting? I'm messing with you now, um, probably sometime, sometime August, September. Um, like you said, Bob's doing the public hearing. Um, of the progress made in September. Um, he did do a presentation from town, in front of town council yesterday. Um, but I, I believe you would be have, you'll, you'll have a presentation at some point, you know. Um, but we can, we can. Bother Bob with that information at the July nineteenth meeting if we want to.
Shane, I don't want to overstep because I know it's something you typically handle, but um. I happen to be watching the town council meeting last night. And Bob did a great job of his presentation. Uh, but I believe Mr. Geller and Mr. Jimmy, and we're both reappointed.
Yes, to the, to the, to the surprise of. Them as well, um, hearing about it for the first time.
So, so I know we just recently got an email. But I, from um. Town Clerk Hunt that. People aren't getting sworn in after reappointments typically, so we would need. Mr. Geller and Mr. Jimmy to get sworn in before the July nineteenth meeting, is that correct?
Yes, and if while they're at town hall getting re sworn in, I would love for them to pick up the subdivision packets for the next meeting.
Okay.
That's where my priorities lie.
I just. I know, I know there's some, I know there's some confusion with a reappointment, somebody not being sworn in, which I believe they were sworn in, but. I just think that, so we don't have that confusion going in the, in the future that, that um.
No, by all means, i- i- reach out to Merrily too on via email if there's any concerns. She's got the, the record, so um.
And Bob did send out the um, I guess, and I was one of the delicate ones. I just finished it and sent it in, but. We're still. Uh, and I, you would know better than I know, but we're still waiting for people to finish the ethics exam.
Yeah, conflict of interest training. If you guys could provide your certificates to us, print them out.
I sent it to Bob.
We sent him, Bob, okay.
You should have it. I, assuming it went through, I sent it to him.
I, and I, and just, you know, Shane, I sent mine to Bobby and Merrily. I don't, I think he was gonna forward it to a.
Yeah, that's, that's totally fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. Um.
That's all I got.
Alright. Anything else? Any board member comments? Any public comment? Any motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
There was the McDonald? There was a second?
Second.
There was a Jimmy?
No.
A discussion? Okay, Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm a S, so. Happy summer and Fourth of July, everybody. We won't see you for a month, right?
Yeah, you too.
That's not.
So.